This meeting of the Carson City Library Board of Trustees ordered. Should we go ahead and do the roll call?
Chair Bruce and me.
Present.
Vice Chair Sandra. Trustee Gregor.
Here.
Trustee DeVerotti.
Here.
Trustee Patton.
Here.
Of course, present.
Okay. Moving on to item two, public comment. If any members of the public would like to come forward and give comment. And seeing none, we will move on to item three. Approval of the meetings of the previous, or minutes of the previous meeting. Do you have a chance to review those minutes? And were there any corrections necessary?
I didn't see any.
Okay. In that case, I would entertain a motion.
A motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. All right. Motion and a second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to item four, the Friends of the Carson City Library Report.
Apparently, there is no report in your packet because LaMonsa June got away from both Patty and I. But she did give a report at our Friends Board of Directors meeting just the other night, and I can kind of bring up today on that. Things are going quite well as far as donations are coming. They're either coming in feast or famine. And then when it's steady, it's more like feast than famine. So we've got lots of books. The sale of children's books on the 11th went very well. We have an event, a new event that we're starting, which you all got a flyer for. Starting this Monday, we're doing, we're the first of a series of Let's Talk things with Sina. So Sina's going to come and tell all members who show up what's going on at the library, where our funds are going, and all that sort of thing. And then we're going to open it up for discussion. Hopefully, these people will have lots of questions and ideas. And we'll give her some direction on how she wants to move forward. That will be this Monday over in the bookstore at 6:15 p.m., and there will be light refreshments served. And then on July 9th, we have an author. We call her the Ghost Lady. Her name is Arlene Jenkins, and she writes about paranormal activities from people in the local community that she's taught. It's a very interesting book. She'll be there on Saturday evening night from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. Talking to people signing books and all that. We have a sale in our bargain room this Friday and Saturday. There'll be an additional 25%. All of those books are now 50 cents on the ballot. As you can tell, we got good books. That's it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Moving on to item five. Board of Trustees' business, starting with discussion and possible action on public 3D printing policy for the Carson City Library.
Okay, so in your packets, what you're going to see is where we put the 3D printing policy into the Carson City Library policy. We felt it most appropriate to be under technology. And as I pull that up on the computer here, I want to be able to make changes. If you guys see, if you see any of those changes, we can do that here. Okay, so what you'll notice is in the, they're, all your changes are in red. So on the table of contents, you'll see under the technology at Carson City Library, we've added 3D printing on page 18. And then the library rules and regulations, what we've done is change just what was a suspension hearing request to any hearing request. And that's on page 23. So in the 3D printing policy, we've borrowed heavily and changed some items from the Sacramento Public Library, which we do, we have received permission to do so. So the first thing I'm correcting is the first line says let's say three-dimensional, not
Correct.
dimensional objects. So what you'll see is we are stating that they must be used for, the printing must be used for local purposes, and it cannot be prohibited by local, state, or federal law. That covers a lot. It can't be unsafe, harmful, dangerous, or pose an immediate threat to the well-being of others. And that covers the weapons issue that we were discussing in the previous meeting. The third is obscene or otherwise inappropriate for library environment. The fourth is in violation of another's intellectual property rights. And the fifth is, if there's any additional questions, refer to the library rules and regulations section of the policy. That covers any other behavioral issues regarding wanting to 3D print, etc. So we reserve the right to refuse any 3D print request. Instructions to request an appeals hearing can be found on page 23 under hearings, request for a hearing. So our costs, what we've decided to do was use an existing calculator for that cost so that as the cost of materials change, we're not always changing what it says in the policy. Though I will provide the link in the policy to where they can calculate a cost. And I'm going to bring that up for you now.
Will you put that link right in there?
Yes. And it will be clickable from the PDF on the website.
Would you also have a hard copy available to people when they come in?
Yes, but you, like, so like, it is an actual calculator. See if I can just pull it up here. So what it does is you select the type of filament. You select the size of the filament. You enter in the amount that the roll has cost you. So sometimes it could be $34.99, sometimes it could be $55.99, just depends on the filament. The length of the filament and the roll, the job time. So if I do 500 here, job time is 95 minutes. Cost per hour, we're putting it .025, and there's no markup. What you'll get is the total cost for the job, and this is a much more realistic cost for the services that we're providing. Because we're not doing, we're just doing cost recovery, we're not making a profit on it.
Right. So when they come in and they talk to you, you'll be able to take them right to this page and show them?
Correct. And what we'll, and so we can also plug in either to a computer or to the 3D printer itself, a USB with the image on it, and then be able to tell some of these others, like, okay, you know, you need this much length of filament. This is how we're going to calculate that out.
And you're putting the link on the fourth.
Correct. And I'll do that right now, as we're talking. So we've also included a clause in here that items printed from the printers, if they're not picked up within 10 days, because they will pay before print, that they become property of the library. I mean, there's flexibility in that, but if somebody comes back six months later and wants what they 3D printed, we may not have it anymore. Only designated library staff will be able to have hands-on access to the 3D printer. The main reason for that is safety. The extruder on the 3D printer gets past 215 degrees Celsius, which is very hot. And so we don't want anybody touching that and burning themselves. And there's exceptions to the above 3D printing section that will be made for library or participants in library programs. So we say that they have to have a premier library card to use it, but if they're 10 years old and they're in a library program, they'll still be able to use the 3D printer. So are there any questions or concerns or wording changes that you guys would like to see in this area?
So if someone comes in with an idea of something they want to print, maybe they want to replace a missing chess piece or something. Does the item get scanned, and then some kind of a recipe comes out that'll tell the calculator what size filament and how much, and what, how much time and all that?
There's, yeah, so there's, there's two options. So we do have a 3D scanner that can scan it, and then it essentially gives you the file. So then we can measure based on what the file is telling us.
That'll point into the calculator.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
We also will be using, okay, here we go. On the designated library staff, we also say that basic knowledge of 3D modeling is required in order to create the design. And this knowledge can be obtained through the library's class, Basic 3D Printing. So that's something that we'll be consistently offering from July 1st forward.
So people will have to take that class before they can?
They won't have to, but if they don't, if like, they don't know how to make a 3D model, and they don't have something to scan, it's the best way to do that because we don't have the staff that necessarily know how to make a 3D model. We, what we do, but we don't, we want to teach it in a class and not start essentially giving away a service for free
Over and over and over.
To the public. I have, I did not have time to send it through the DA's office. I don't know if that DA would have had time to review it if I had it done on time. But it is, that it can go through there. That's absolutely.
We would be happy to look at it, to make any changes if we need to do that.
It looks like it was pretty legally safe, like the Sacramento was and everything, but I know.
We decided to not cite any specific laws in it, partially for that reason. They can request a hearing. Okay, so if we go to page 34 of the policy, and I'll let Diane get there as well, I'll just kind of start talking about where I've changed some of these items. So it's a, this is a procedure to request a hearing to complete and return part B. And so instead of it saying, if you would like a hearing, you must complete and return part B of this form within five business days of the date of the notice of suspension. I've added of suspension or 3D print denial. So that's what you'll kind of see throughout this. We also had in our hearing date that we would mail a paper copy out. But I think that with technology, how it is, I think we should be adding and email there as well. We then have hearing procedure, 3D print, for 3D printing, because it's a little bit different than what it would be for a suspension. So we have those two there. When you arrive for your hearing, you will be provided an opportunity to present evidence or reasons why instead of suspension, it's the 3D, the 3D printing denial should be withdrawn. The 3D printing denial will be withdrawn if the hearing officer determines by a preponderance of the evidence that you will not violate the 3D printing section of this policy. So the hearing, the hearing isn't necessarily set to determine if they can print a weapon. It's to determine if what they're printing still falls into that policy. So then the hearing determination, I've also, instead of just saying suspension, I've added suspension or 3D printing denial. Then on the next page, this is the form. I changed the form some here to, yeah.
Where you said the suspension, is that or or four? Suspension for 3D printing denial?
Yes, or.
It is or?
It is or, yeah. So on page 35, I've changed the notice of library hearing for suspension to notice of library hearing suspension or 3D printing, part B. So. Yeah, I'll have it. So we have hearing suspension or 3D printing denial, and I'm adding it there as well. And so I, yes, I want to appeal this decision. Because it used to say, yes, I want to appeal this suspension. And then they check which one they're, they're wanting to appeal by hearing. Then they'll fill in their name, address, city, telephone, email address, and then the reason for the appeal. And then that comes back to the library, and then that's when we start the process for giving them that hearing.
On the table of contents, you have hearing requests, page 23. But there's nothing changed on page 23.
That may have been a typo on my.
Okay, and so the procedures to request a hearing on page 34, I think, need to be identified in the table of contents.
Yes. Well, it's, that's an appendix. So that's an appendix item.
Oh, page 34 is?
Yeah.
Okay, so do we have a table of contents for the appendix?
It's the list of appendices. It's at the bottom of the table.
Oh, right here?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so it's, it's E, notice of library hearing for suspension and 3D printing. And then I'll add denial here and highlight it in red.
Thank you.
And let me go back to 23 really quickly here. Okay, so I'm going to put or 3D printing.
Okay, so that's good.
There.
In, in red.
Yep. And this is not something that you do have to take action on today. We can, with these corrections, get it to the DA's office for them to review as well. I just want to make sure. I'm changing it here as well.
So you changed the list of.
So this, well, what I'm going to do is instead of keeping those, and changing that paragraph, I'm going to go back to here because I'm pretty sure that it was first what these two were on this form E, and then I'll put the procedure for suspension and 3D printing separate in that section. So where, this paragraph that says hearing procedure will now be two separate paragraphs, one for suspensions and one for 3D printing.
But still under appendix E?
It will also appear on page 23. Are there, are there any concerns or comments about the way that we're approaching the appeal?
No. But did you change the title on, Carson City Library Notice, Library Suspension, Part A?
No, because that is only for suspension. Part A is only a suspension.
Okay.
The only other thing that I could see is on page 35, the title of the page, would it be hearing for suspension or 3D printing?
We could, that's what I asked her before.
Oh, you got me?
No, I asked you about this on page 34. She said or.
Yes.
No, 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 hearing for suspension on 35. Because it runs to me. Notice of library hearing suspension.
But she said there's two, you get to make the choice, right? Hearing suspension or, who do you hear?
Right.
So you have the choice.
Who wants to hear?
So, okay, because, because I've copied and pasted it on my page 36 now.
Oh, okay.
I'm like, adding not.
Right.
Hearing for.
Yeah.
Or a.
Yeah, or a.
Hearing for suspension.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, yeah, it was hearing suspension, but now it's more than that. If we don't, if we don't take action on this today, we can, you know, if you have any other comments, please feel free to provide them.
I think I'd just like to see it cleaned up and brought back, just so there's no mistakes with it. If that's all right with anybody else.
And just so you guys know, I'm going to do some research into the hearing and the what constitutes otherwise inappropriate for the library, because I do have a little concern with First Amendment issues. So I just want to make sure we're all in, within the parameters of that.
Do we need a motion for that to?
I don't think so.
Have you go back and, okay.
No.
In that case, unless there's any other discussion, we'll move on to item D. Discussion on Possible Action on Library Policy. Oops, we got the.
No, we did that, it's good.
Yeah, go to C, Possible Action for the One-Year Update on Opening on Sundays.
Okay, so what you have in your pocket, you have a one-page. For some of you, I think it's going to be on the back of the last page of the policy. And it's, it's Sunday's report, and it just says Possible Action. Keep Sunday open hours the same. Revert to closed Sunday hours, as was prior to Sunday, June 7th. That is not my recommendation. Or three open four hours on Sundays, staff with part-time staff and a rotating manager. This would also allow hours on Monday through Friday to be open at 10:00 a.m. rather than 11:00 a.m. I would say that that's probably the largest complaint about opening on Sundays that we have received, is that loss of that hour during the week for patrons. Now, that being said, we've had just as many exciting thank you comments about being open on Sundays. So I would recommend that if we are going to change our hours again, that we do a community-wide survey and really take a look at what the usage hours are going to be. But I did let the board know that in a year, we would bring back on Sundays so that you could see what was going on with our scheduling. So the other comment I made here is the statistics have shown that currently, the first two hours of the day are the slowest on Sundays at the library. Like, by far, the slowest two hours at any point in time at the library. So with that, what I have here is some data. You guys have a printed staple packet of this with you as well. I, if this has, you guys have the data as well as the chart. I'm just showing the charts. But I can also provide this to you in Excel or a Google Sheets format. I have also posted it on the website, so that it's there for the public as well. So the data comparison on Sundays, this was just all of the data that I'm going to show you, but you can, just by taking a look, tell that Sundays don't produce as many door counts. So the people, computer usage, service interactions, or circulation. Except for the fact that pre-Sundays, we did not have any circulation on Sundays. So then you go to door count, and this is what the door counts from November 1st forward look like for each day of the week. So as you can see, Sundays is quite low comparatively. It's not, definitely not the most popular day, but we do have people in on Sundays. It was interesting to see as well, you'll see it kind of in the, the. You guys don't have the daily count because it was too. But the daily count, it was interesting to see because some Sundays were very popular, and some Sundays were very unpopular. It, it seemed even Easter Sunday was actually a very popular Sunday, when you might think that it might not be. So that was some interesting data to pull and look at. Our computer usage is actually about higher on Sundays. Our average session, instead of about 60 minutes, 50 to 60 minutes, is 75 minutes. So people spend more time on the computer when they're at the library on Sundays than any other day of the week. That could be because there's not as many people, so it's easier to acquire a computer. Or it could just mean that's what they want to do with their Sunday. Our circulation comparison here, you'll see on Sundays, we have circulation now. It is quite lower than any of our other days of the week. So pre-Sunday, Monday, was our busiest day, before we were open on Sundays. Now Tuesdays and Thursdays are pretty much tied and even. Some, like, so you'll see that Tuesday actually has a higher circulation, but Thursday has a higher computer usage. So then we go to service interactions. These are the interactions with staff at the desks, or, and/or over the phone or via email. And you'll see here, Sundays are lower than the other days. Thursdays are actually our highest service interaction days, which does make sense. We do have storytimes Thursday mornings, currently. So what have we been able to accomplish by being open on Sunday? I think that's important for you guys to know and see. And so if you look up at the screen, what you'll see are some pictures of some of the activities that Sundays have given us. So Sundays have given us the Manufacturing Technician 1 program. These, this individual here, Brittany, and then Sam, both graduated here at a board meeting, and they attended the program on Sundays. Sundays on Sunday. We did this last year to bring in people and to make them aware that we were open on Sundays, which was a very fun environment and activity. We also had our pop-up storytimes, though Aubrey doesn't work on Sunday. It is a storytime picture. Heather was doing our pop-up storytimes on Sunday. So then the last is our. Our Partner Access in the Digitarium. That was what really got us started with talking about being open on Sundays, was the student need in the community to be able to come in, have a place they could access internet, and do work, and get work done. And that's been a big part of us being open on Sunday, is allowing those students to come in. It's generally in the afternoon, but still, the students to come in and potentially do a last-minute assignment, or maybe get, get caught up in a head on assignments in this space as well as in the space in the back of the library.
I forget, remember, popular Sundays are based on what they have done by Monday?
It is very possible that the curriculum of the school district and due dates correspond with when our Sundays are most popular. Definitely a Sunday in December showed that. That, that piece, like, oh, yeah, that, on Monday, those PSAs review. That's, that was what that was. So with that, that is the end of this presentation that I have here. That's just a look at what we've done on Sundays and what our statistics show on Sundays. Again, I don't necessarily think we should change it this time, but I do think. but I do think that a community-wide services, uh, or wide survey, not only about Sundays and Sunday hours or weekday hours, but also about services that we offer to the community. It's, it's time to look at that again.
Would that be online?
Um, we could probably do it in online and paper format, since a number of our patrons do not use, um, an online format. We can accommodate both ways.
What would you do, survey for something else once people?
We've done a couple surveys, just in-house surveys.
Okay, and what kind of numbers did you generate, do you think? It's, it's putting you on the spot, I realize.
I, I think Kathy ran the last, um, in-house survey that we did, and it wasn't a huge amount of participation, but what I would explore is, you know, the, the name in a jar for a raffle or for a gift card. Um, we do have Diane sacrificed one of her mornings, and she went to a, an event where we received a free, uh, quarter-page ad in the appeal. And so maybe that's something that we advertise or push in the appeal as well, um, to try and get some participation from those readers.
I would think, yes, but the survey's gonna show you something like the shorter hours of Sunday and the longer hours during the week is gonna be most popular.
That is very plausible, um, but I would want, I would want to make sure that with our users and our community that that's truly what they want.
Right, yeah. Do you put the age on there, do you think? The age of the person responding to the survey?
We can do demographic on there.
I think that's important, since students are the ones that are in Sunday, especially if they're driving this.
I'd do like Sunday, I'd do like, like, twelve to four, one to five, or whatever you, on Sunday. And leave Sunday morning alone.
That's what.
And then get back to ten o'clock on the week, on the regular days and Saturday.
That's, that's that option number three, that's what we're working at, is, I, I.
You have to cut the hour in the evening, I don't care about that either.
Um, generally, so what we would be, so if we did option number three, just so you can see, like, we have Sundays from twelve to four, Mondays from ten to six, so we would be cutting off a half hour off of Monday. Um, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the, the ten to eight, and Friday, ten to six, again, cutting off that half hour there, and Saturday, ten to five.
I would think that's probably the general issue.
It looks like.
Okay, so the next.
Just the page after.
Have, have you been doing any, to have a survey on staff?
Um, we, I have talked to some of the staff members, not an official survey. Um, some of them really like working on Sunday. And some of them are in this room right now. So, um, so that is something that we would have to examine, because we would be, if we, if we are working a sho- a shorter Sunday, we really can't utilize, uh, full-time CCEA staff unless we don't give them a two-day weekend. And that's not something that I think we want to branch.
Okay, so the other thing is, how busy are you in the evening at that last half hour, seven-thirty to eight? I came in here once for some reason and it wasn't good. I don't know what day of the week it was.
You'd just have to run another dataset.
Yeah. And the other thing is, um, just, um. That was, that was the main thing, that, that last half hour that you're talking about. Especially that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight PM one. Helping Peter to pay Paul.
I'm opening the report now.
I know, it's putting you on the spot, I'm sorry. It's just brainstorming here.
No, and, um, we're here to discuss it.
And, oh, that's what it was. Don't shoot the mess in here. Winter hours versus summer hours? Not too confusing.
There's a majority of our community that still does not know that we're open on Sundays.
I, yeah, I know.
And so I think that that might be adding a complexity level.
I'm just putting it out there.
Um, so what you see up here that I have on my iPad, you're gonna see some circulation really early in the morning that generally is a volunteer or a staff member checking out an item, just so you know.
Yeah.
Um, but we'll go to Mondays real quick here, I'm just gonna pull this up so you can see the edge here. So this six to seven, we, we circulate two thousand three hundred and thirty-nine items versus over twice that much in the hours between five and six.
Right, no, I understand that, but I'm looking at the, the eight PM.
Oh, the se- the, okay, here.
Seven to eight.
So, it's about a thousand less.
You're up to nine, or is that just staff?
That, well, that's either staff or individuals we haven't been able to get out of the building. Um, this is, by the, by the way, this is total circulation, so what you're seeing is total circulation on a Tuesday from eight to nine for the whole, for the whole year. Um, so on Wednesday, it looks like, again, we're right about a thousand.
What kind of warning is it to get out of the building besides the signs of the checkout computers?
We flash the lights fifteen minutes.
That's what I would ask, all right.
Um, so it looks like the last hour, we have about a thousand less. We do still have computer usage, pretty considerable computer usage.
You guys are too nice. Do we, do, have people be here after the place closes?
It has not been, it has not been as bad, because we have had to keep that in mind, because we do have the cash drawer now, and we do have to count that cash drawer, and that does take a longer amount of time, and we cannot do it with patrons in the building for security reasons. And so we, we have been more strict about getting them out of the building.
See, if they know that place is closing a half hour soon, or give, you know, give them enough notice, just like you did, we're gonna be open on Sunday, whenever, starting June first or whatever it was. And they just have to get to the checkout sooner.
So what you'll see, so, just so you can see, I, the top is that first hour, we're open on Sundays. And that first hour is pretty, pretty low. And then we kind of ramp up from there and keep steady throughout the remainder of the day. But it's still, compared to our other open days, that's less than half at times of our circulation.
But that half is people that could not access stuff to the library before, a lot, a lot of.
Correct.
The main purpose, my understanding, please correct me, is computer access for the community being open on Sunday. That was one of the main reasons.
Computer, computer access, but also, like, students aren't necessarily always, well, they are always on the computer, but research access.
I understand that, but when we were discussing this back in the day, it was, there's no, supposedly, no but, nowhere else in the community where people that didn't have a computer could get to a computer on Sunday.
There isn't.
Without paying for it or something like that, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, so the four hours. Well, what we're seeing is they don't come that early. Well, I, I would say you definitely don't wanna go back to knowing some of these services.
Right.
And that wouldn't hurt anything to cut off that first two hours, I don't think. Might increase your circulation by squeezing them in.
So what I pulled up here, too, is this is the computer usage by day, so you can have a look at that. So, I mean, compared to, for instance, like a Saturday, Sunday's actually quite close.
It's not statistically that different.
And like I said, see how the average session is seventy-five versus the others.
So there'll be people who feel more comfortable, because it's not as crowded and they don't have to worry about somebody else wanting to use their computer and all that stuff.
But all in all, I would say that being open on Sundays has been very successful in the community.
I've had comments from people like this. Yep, absolutely, that's what I should have added, it's, I know we have two arguments, so, yeah, all right. What is the duration of the survey, thirty days to eight?
We have, we haven't sent out the survey yet.
I know that.
But I mean, so it could be anything?
Okay. What was the last survey duration? What would you suggest?
Kathy, do you recall how long the last survey was out for?
That's, yeah.
Oh, it's too long.
It's way too long.
I, I would say that it needs to be two weeks, potentially three.
Ten to fourteen days.
But. It might not capture as many people, but it's gonna capture the people who are gonna participate. So what you see here is, um, by day, so we started, our first Sunday was six, seven, two thousand fifteen, and we had eighty-seven users on the computers. Um, and then the next Sun- Sunday, we had eighty-eight and so forth. Um, I'm gonna go scroll through all of this data, and unfortunately, it's not available in an Excel sheet. To the session reports. So, um, on the twelfth, which was a Sunday, right? Yeah, so we had a hundred and six, um, last Sunday, we had eighty-six. So it does vary. Yeah.
Are we still doing M two-one classes on Sundays?
We will not be doing, um, in-person M two-one classes. We, after the end of this month, we will no longer have that grant. Um, but we will be doing self-paced, giving individuals the opportunity to access the course material whenever they need it at the library. And we'll be working very closely with WNC in that process as well. And that's part of it, is that in the training hub, we have SolidWorks on those computers provided by WNC and really working on that partnership between the two, so that students can come and do work at the library. WNC does not offer any computers with SolidWorks on it, available to students on Sundays.
Do we have any numbers on the digitarium usage?
Specifically, um, I could pull those numbers, but it would be in our, in our, um, with our Macs, our MacBook use, as well as our, um, accounts for program engineering. Our MacBooks, though, are best circulating collection. Um, it's, their, their turnover rate is the best rate even over DVDs and fiction items. And they are only checked out in this space, so.
And the SolidWorks is necessary for the work on the M two-one, right?
SolidWorks is not necessary for the M two-one online program, but it is necessary for kind of the trifecta, um, or three legs of the stool in getting individuals a job.
Okay.
You know, they, they're, they have the, the theory of manufacturing, and then they have, they can read the code for a SolidWorks object, so now they can actually go and work in it on a manufacturing floor and run the code and see if there's issues with that code.
Okay.
I wonder if they can set up one of these surveys?
We probably could have it set up in a couple of days.
Thinking if we could get it set up and run it for like, say, two, three weeks, so you'd have information by our next meeting on what the community thinks, and then we can make a final decision.
Is that?
I couldn't hear.
I couldn't hear, I think.
I said, she said they could set up the survey in a couple of days, so why don't we ask them to run it for like, two, three weeks and bring back the information in our next meeting?
I'd say two weeks max, so you can get it, but, yeah, I like that idea.
Make a final decision.
The hours.
Uh, we need a motion to move forward with that survey?
Um, no, I think you should just table this one for the next one.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. In that case, uh, I believe we can move on to item six, the, uh, library record administrative reports.
Okay, so the first one that you're gonna see, it's under your tab of budgets. Um, this is your, the one-on-one DVR detailed budget report of the city fund. So we are ninety-two percent of the year lapsed, and we are eighty-five percent of our budget spent. Um, we have also had an augmentation approved for our retirement and resignation payouts. Um, that was approved at the June sixteenth meeting of the Board of Supervisors. So what you see here also does not include what was purchased in the month of May on P cards or this month. Um, that's something that does take a little while for the city to get entered into their accounts. Um, but are there any questions or concerns on any of the? We are overspent in equipment repair and maintenance. Um, being overspent in one line item is not, um, too, too big of an issue, but I do know what that is for, and that is for a coffee machine. As you can tell, it is not making the greatest of coffee. Um, but we are working on getting a new coffee leaf, um, so we did have to buy out and, I mean, the lease was over, but we did have to buy out the machine and finish all of that up.
And you do have the ability to take from one line item to cover.
Correct. And that's why, in, the bottom line, we're eighty-five percent spent and ninety-two percent of the year lapsed, which is, that's good.
Good.
We're looking at potentially reverting respectable amounts, um, but not too much. Are there any additional questions on the one-on-one? Okay, so turning the page, you'll see the two-three-o or the gift fund. Again, we're ninety-two percent of the year lapsed, and we're sixty-seven percent spent in the budgeting space here. One of the items that has not been spent, but we have been working with Affordable Office Solutions, is for the furniture and everything for that back room, that you have approved, as well as the friends did approve that match. So we're working with them, we're trying to get within our price point, we're very close, and they are working with us, um, so that, I think, we'll be looking at. We're hoping that installation can happen late July, potentially in August. But late July, we have a, um, a lull in the summer learning challenge, where we could move staff into this space here while work takes place in the back room. Are there any other questions on the gift fund DVR? Okay, then we have our, um, our account activity listing for the gift fund. If you do have any questions about that, um, or if you have questions after you've looked at it, feel free to ask them, feel free to ask them at the next meeting as well. So then we come to our, is everyone ready? No, okay, to our mini-grants, which are two-seven, it's the two-seven-five. What you'll see here is we have our state collection development money, our Hía de los Niños, um, grant funding, our Building Habits of Minecraft grant funding, um, which that match was provided by this board, and that included a position, that's part of what you'll see in the payroll in the gift fund, as well as our, um, Summer Learning Challenge grant funding. Um, what you'll also see is why some of these areas are over budget is because they are mini-grants, and so they do not come to us within the timeframe that the city can clear them into the budget, and so they are, they go unbudgeted in the report. That does not mean we don't receive the funds, we do still receive the funding. So moving to the next is our Nevada's Working Capital Grant. Um, we are ninety-two percent of the year lapsed with seventy-one percent of the budget spent. We are working on some of that, um, we will potentially be reverting a little bit back to the. of that. We will potentially be reverting a little bit back to the State Library Archive, and that's due to not utilizing the trainer as much as we were initially planning on utilizing the trainer. Okay, are there any questions about the budget? Okay, so moving on to my director's report, what you'll see is actually two pages. So there is a backside today. But on the front page, you'll see some activity and purchases for what we've done with the friends, some of the friends' funds with Overdrive, and how we've spread out, how we purchase Overdrive so that there's generally always new materials for patrons to be able to access. The biggest piece of this report that I have to report to you is our, the last section of the library's fence was damaged severely. We are not quite sure what happened at this time. However, it looks to me not like somebody drove up on the sidewalks. There's no tire marks. But potentially someone tried to turn around and hit it. It wasn't hit from the parking lot because there is a giant bush, which would have shown damage. But we are working with risk management and public works and facilities to figure out what we're going to do about that. Because as you recall, when you had agreed to pay for said fencing, Public Works was going to maintain that.
Right.
So then on the back of my report, so library activities, we have had new staff come on board and so that is a listing of them there. You will get to meet some of them today. I believe Maria will be joining us a little bit later. So Aubrey White is our librarian. He's been around for a while, but he has received that position. Natalie Wood is our Creative Learning Manager. She's here. She will be getting up and giving a report and introducing herself as well. Amy Louder is our Collection Development Manager. She's in the back. And then Maria Clasta is our Circulation Librarian, and she's currently on desk, actually. We then do have two part-time summer staff that have come aboard, Coral and Isabel. So then what I have for you here, since we've reorganized some of our departments so that you have an understanding of where people are, who people are, and what people are generally doing, you have the organizational chart. If you would like that in a larger format, I'd be more than happy to provide that. I then included a contacting the library section here so that you have the phone numbers of each of the individuals, as well, of our full-time staff, as well as the emails for our managers. So that if you needed to contact them, or somebody you know needed to contact them, you would have that information. So then, we have a section for in the news. What I've added here essentially is what we've talked, we talked about briefly at the last meeting, but it was before press releases went out, of the Yalssa announces its top ten summer learning programs for two thousand and sixteen. An N C lab program that we've run here at the library, submitted by Aubrey, was chosen as one of those top ten. And for that, we also appeared in the Nevada Appeal under Silver Dollars and Wooden Nickels as a silver dollar. We then had a school board and Board of Supervisors joint meeting where we reviewed the status and our progress for our Mobile Maker Space Grant and what that's going to look like for the communities, as well as our engagement with the school district and our partnerships regarding Infinite Campus, which is a tool that parents will use to track grades, look at student attendance, and students will do the same in the system. And so we're partnering with the school district to provide that lifelong learning educational component. Are there any questions about my report?
How did you do that with other hours that we had?
Wait, what?
I don't know. Say you had it busy enough.
Okay. So what I'm going to ask with the next report, which is Creative Learning, is Natalie's going to introduce herself, and I'll kind of introduce her as well, I guess. And then after she reports, then Aubrey's going to talk a little bit about the Summer Learning Challenge, which you do have the calendars in front of you as well. They're glossy with the rays from Star Wars on there.
Okay. Hi, I'm Natalie Wood, our Creative Learning Manager. Very excited to be part of the Carson City Library, part of the team, and for the opportunity to implement programming within our community. Also, just to be a part of our Creative Learning Department, which we have three of us here, one open position that we're still going to be hiring for, for our department. Currently, we're working on quite a few things. The hundred programs going on for our Summer Learning Challenge, which is quite a few things going on. Building our annual calendar, we're going to try and do like a July to June calendar, really plan ahead, have a lot of stuff going on and planned in preparation to just allow for more efficiency in planning with a long-term calendar like that. Also, looking into additional and various program options, just to make sure we're meeting all of our community needs. Some of that would be like social media through the U and R Cooperative Extension in Carson City. We already have kind of started some of that. Teen programs, we went and visited the Boys and Girls Club opening of the teen center today, and they're interested in expanding our current programs with them to incorporate more of that teen program there. Surveying patrons, which one we talked about today. I have one going on right now about story times and additional times. I'd love for you to look at kind of what we have there. It's just a creative way to engage families that way. Also, another thing we're looking at is the mobile book bike trailer, maybe introducing that into our community. We do have a proposal and process for that. If you guys are interested in looking at kind of the price and how that would look and getting into, you know, we have a lot of trails events in the community. They're very close. We have a lot of very active members. So tapping into that part of our demographics in our community. And of course, just because the Learning Department is so new, just getting that department going and building our team.
You're welcome.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
It gets to be official this time. For the record, Aubrey White, librarian in the Creative Learning Department. So first, I have really good news. I get to start off with the fun thing. We have, as of two hours ago, three hundred and eighty-five individuals signed up for the Summer Learning Challenge. And given that we haven't even made it to the end of June, I think that that is an extremely encouraging number. And people are still coming in and asking, well, has it started yet? Yes, yes, it has started. And we've already had some of our programs that we talked about. We have a hundred planned for the summer between ourselves and our community partners. And I just wanted to talk about some of the highlights really fast. Our first Minecraft program, we had a grandma bring her two grandkids in, and they knew what they were doing, but grandma was just, you know, this is Minecraft, I don't know what it is. We got her on a MacBook Pro and she could do the basics of Minecraft by the end of the day. I'm not sure if she was fully comfortable with it yet, but I know she was moving an avatar around on the screen.
Aubrey, you do know you're looking at about four grandkids up here on this thing, right? You better be judicious about that. And how you're using it.
It's an encouraging thing. It's an encouraging thing. Have you played Minecraft, John? I'm going to be good.
I don't know what those two kids are doing. They don't even know what he's doing.
Yeah. It's just, I like hearing people getting to experience new things. She had no idea what this thing was that her grandkids thought was the greatest thing on earth. And by the end of her visit here at the library, now she has a better idea. And that's what, I think, our Creative Learning Department is going to encapsulate, is helping people with new experiences. And another event that we're doing, Life Size Gaming, we did Pac-Man and Angry Birds here at the library on Friday. It was a lot of fun. We're going to be doing Scrabble with the teams. And it's going to be an open board. I'm not going to tie them in. So I'm really curious to see where the Scrabble pieces end up in the building, because I'm just going to start them off out there and let them wander and see what happens. You have the calendar in front of you with that excellent photo on the front. There are some events that are coming up really soon that I have listed here, our community series, you know, having different community members come in and talk about what's going on. Another, Life Size Gaming, if you want to see Scrabble in action. That's the one I talked about that's happening July first. And then our N C lab program that has been really popular, we'll be doing another one of those on July third. Minecraft is happening every week. So John, I'm going to see you there, right?
Once.
Well, this time I can let you get on a computer and run around. We'll be doing that every week. Outdoor Games on July second, Movie Night, June twenty-eighth, and then there's more and more events throughout the rest of the summer. So do you have any questions for me about the programs or about the reading part of the Summer Learning Challenge? Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. Moving on to item B, the Access Services update.
Kathy Rush, Manager of Access Services.
I'm Maria Clasta. I am the librarian.
Yes, Circulation Librarian.
So Maria has joined us from Wyoming, I believe.
Yes.
And very excited to have her on board. And so she and I have been sort of working out a go-forward for the department and the team that we have. And so we're getting up to speed on what we do. We're also rethinking new ways to deliver circulation services, ways to improve. Of course, Maria's getting familiar with Polaris and the front desk operations, also the check-in in the back room. Of course, we know the back room is going to be changing, and we're just looking at all the different ways that we can do our jobs better and provide the best customer service we can. In terms of technical service, aside of access services, we have a new fiscal year coming up. We're going to be setting up a new book budget, training, training the new staff that have come on board on how to order through our, the process that we use. We also have, Maria and I, have some big projects on the horizon. One is getting premier library cards to all city employees, which is something that we were tasked with, I was tasked with, a few months ago. But now with Maria on board, we're going to start moving forward on getting that done. We're also looking at, and I don't know if this is general knowledge, about the computerized library card sign-up. With Dana's help, we're hoping to set up a computer here in the lobby where, not the lobby, but the front area, where people can actually sign up for a library card on the computer when they come to the front desk. Their record is already there. You just have to give them their card and maybe, you know, check their ID and maybe take a photo. If it's a premier card, well, of course, it wouldn't be unless they were upgrading from a card they already had. And that's just another way we hope to streamline the service and maybe reduce the time at the front desk for the patron. So, and we also have a position that we will be, our library's position will help fill out our team as well, that we have to hire.
Well, welcome.
Yes, I'm excited to be here. So, thank you.
Moving on to the Collection Development update.
Hi, good evening. I'm Rachel March, Senior Library Assistant, and this is our new Collection Development Librarian.
Hi, I'm Amy Louder. I am back. I worked here from twenty, twenty-eleven to twenty-thirteen. Is that right? Sorry. Yes, I see you're right. And I'm back as the Collection Development Manager with Rachel and Sandy, which is really great because they're so good at their jobs. And Rachel put together the report that you have, which is, if you want to read your report.